Hello, I'm Becky Veevey. I'm the bureau chief with Chalk Beach, Chicago. Welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people running in Chicago's historic first school board elections. Welcome to anyone tuning in live at our YouTube channel. If you have questions for the candidates, please type them into the comments and we'll do our best to get to them. We're very happy to welcome one of the candidates of District 3 today, Carlos Rivas. His opponent couldn't make it today, but we will be speaking with him tomorrow morning. Carlos is the Director of Public Affairs at the Civilian Office of Police Accountability, also known as COPA. He's a former CPS teacher, former counselor at UIC College Prep. He's a CPS graduate of his Neighborhood Elementary School Lowell and Northside College Prep, a selective enrollment high school. Rivas also serves as a transitional foster parent. Welcome and thank you so much for being here, Carlos.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great to have you. So, we're starting off all of these conversations with a little icebreaker and I'd love for you to tell me, what was your favorite and least favorite subject growing up in school?
My favorite subject, actually, which is very interesting because I didn't follow this passion later on, but my favorite subject I remember in 6th grade being science. And we had this one science project where we actually went to go test the water at the lagoon in Humboldt Park, which was super fascinating to me. And my least favorite subject, not that it was my least favorite, but at least one that I struggled with a bit and I definitely glad that I had extra supports in school to help me with it, was math. But that's, I think, understandable for those of us who have had to do calculus.
Exactly. We have a lot of folks with a little bit of least favorite math, but that's great. And wow, the lagoon, what an experiment.
Yeah.
What do you remember about what you learned from the water?
So, this was on the lagoon side, not the beach side. And so, I just remember it being like, this is probably not the cleanest water that is out there.
Yeah, oh wow, that's amazing. All right, well, we're going to jump right into some of the most up-to-date current events news in CPS right now. Obviously, there has been a lot of news with the resignation of the previous board and an appointment of new board members who may or may not be your colleagues come January. But we have a couple of yes or no questions and I'm going to just start with a yes or no and then you'll have 30 seconds to kind of explain why you answered the way you did. So, yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO?
Yes.
Do you, yes or no, support taking out a high-interest loan to cover operating costs in Chicago Public Schools?
No.
Okay, and can you explain why you answered the way that you did?
So, first off with keeping our CEO, I think that we need stability in our school system. We've had so many CEOs over the past decade. Our school system absolutely needs stability at a time when we are facing these structural deficits in terms of funding. And I believe CEO Martinez inherited a system that needs his leadership and I want to be able to see him through his full contract.
And how about the loan?
And for the loan, you know, we don't want to bankrupt future generations. If we can't pay for it today, what is going to make that deficit go away next year and the following year? We're going to keep having the same issue unless we change the way we're looking at how we're funding our school system.
Got it. Now, I'm going to get into the question of CPS leadership a little bit more because whether or not Pedro Martinez stays through the end of his contract, this new board will likely be tasked with hiring a new CEO. The board's, one of their key responsibilities is to hire and evaluate and potentially let go of a CPS CEO. What qualities or experience would you like to see a CPS CEO have, whether that's Pedro Martinez or anyone in the future, should you be elected?
Yeah, I think that our CPS CEO needs to have experience, one, and also someone, I believe, should be someone who's really community-focused. We're a city of neighborhoods, 77 distinct community areas. The needs in every neighborhood are different, so I want to be able to see a CEO that really is thinking about authentic community engagement. Right now, we have a lot of performative community engagement and I think as a board, we can work on building more authentic community engagement. And I want a CEO that's going to prioritize bringing our families along in decisions.
You mentioned experience right away. What kind of experience? You mean education experience? Do you believe this person should have been an educator?
So, I do believe that being an educator could be a great experience for them to have, obviously, to understand the needs of our classrooms and our teachers and the difficulties that they face. I also believe, as Pedro Martinez does, have experience being a superintendent in other school districts. I think that's valuable. We're, you know, the fourth-largest school district in the nation. It's a really big task to be able to be the superintendent of our schools, really. You know, that title, CEO versus superintendent. He is a superintendent of schools and so we want to make sure that, I think it would be valuable to have someone who has that experience running a large school district as Pedro Martinez does.
Okay. Let's get into budget, because another one of the school board's big responsibilities is approving a budget every single year. Obviously, district leadership puts together that budget, you guys get to vote on it. Do you, we'll start with a yes or no. Do you think that the state of Illinois should provide CPS additional funding in addition to what it currently does?
Yes.
Okay, let's elaborate on that. So, how would you go about working with state elected officials and other elected officials to get additional state funding to CPS?
So, I think that government officials at every single level need to work together. Obviously, our schools are incredibly important to our communities. Our schools are educating our future and so we need to make sure that at every single level of government, we're working to provide for our schools. We already see that at the aldermanic level with alderpeople who are, you know, providing ward menu money to be able to build playgrounds and things like that at schools. We need to be able to then work together with our state counterparts to be able to advocate for more funding for CPS. There are a lot of structural differences between the way CPS is funded and managed compared to districts across the state of Illinois. So, we want to make sure that we're able to bring some more equity in terms of funding for the district. And so, the state's own funding formula calls for additional funding. It hasn't been allocated yet and I think that we can work together with our state legislature to be able to bring that money in.
So, I also want to talk a little bit about the, whether or not there's additional state funding that gets ramped up. Chicago Public Schools, in its most recent budget, put out a five-year projection of sort of its fiscal picture, if you will. And in that picture, before any added costs related to a new teacher's contract or principal's contract, it projected $500 million deficits for the next five years. So, one of your first tasks, if you're elected, will be to balance that budget next summer. How would you, how do you think about balancing the budget and closing that $500 million structural gap every year? How do you think about those things?
Yeah, that's one of the main reasons why we can't take out a payday loan today to pay for the structural deficit that we have. I think that it's incredibly important that we work with our state counterparts and really all groups to be able to come together to figure out what is it that we can do to ensure that our schools are adequately funded at our level and ensure that we're bringing in the resources necessary. So, that is going to take a lot of work and a lot of people coming together. It's not going to be just a solution of the board, you know? It needs to be something that we're working with our state counterparts, city, to be able to ensure that either there are going to be structural changes in terms of pension payments and things like that, or what is it we're doing that, to ensure that we're using the resources we have adequately.
Well, you mentioned pension payments, so I'm going to ask this question now. Yes or no, this is a question about whether or not you think the city should pick, go back to picking up the cost of non-teaching pensions? Or if you think CPS and the Board of Education should continue to pick up the cost of non-teaching pensions as it has since 2020? And just to clarify, that's the $175 million payment that's kind of caused a lot of conflict between the mayor, the current mayor, and the school board that's outgoing.
Yeah, I believe that we should go back to the city picking up that payment right now. As I said, education is an investment for the entire city of Chicago. We are ensuring that we have the workforce for tomorrow, that our families are well-supported. That's not just the responsibility of the Chicago Public Schools, right? That's a responsibility of all levels of government, nonprofit organizations that are supporting our families. So, I believe that that payment should be made by the city of Chicago to be able to support the school system.
Got it, okay. Moving on to school choice. So, yes or no, another yes or no question. Do you believe that any of Chicago Public Schools admissions policies should change?
No.
If no, can you explain why you think the current policies work as they are currently laid out?
Well, I would want to be able to see first, what is the policy and how it works currently? And then talk to families about how they feel about those policies. Our families need to have the opportunity to be able to choose where they want to send their children, at the elementary school level, on the high school level. And I believe that if we're not providing those choices, then families are going to choose to either leave the city of Chicago or choose some other educational system for their family. And so, I would want to see what is it that the admissions policies currently are and how they're working by learning from families. But I wouldn't want to change something immediately without first really studying what is that going to look like. So, I don't believe that this board in the next year should be able to make that type of change in terms of especially selective and magnet schools.
Because you went to Northside College Prep, yeah. Do you remember what the admissions policies were like when you enrolled there and that process? Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, I remember it being a process of grades, test scores, and attendance to be able to get into Northside at the time. And I remember like how incredibly excited I was. The reason I chose Northside, so I lived, I've lived in North and Kenzie my entire life. That was one bus up, the Kimball Bus, all the way up to Northside. And in 8th grade, I had the opportunity to take a biology class at Northeastern Illinois University. So, right off the same Catalpa stop and being able to go to Northeastern and then, you know, I got to see Northside, you know, pretty much every week. And so, that's how I decided that that's where I wanted to go and be at. And so, I really want to ensure that families who want those choices for their families, for their children, are able to make those choices.
Another element of choice in this Chicago Public School system is the 100-plus charter schools that the Chicago Board of Education has approved and opened and continues to, you know, allow to operate. Charter schools are publicly funded and privately run. There have been times that the Board of Education in the past has taken steps to end those contracts when charter schools are not performing well or have had financial troubles. This most recently happened with Urban Prep, though there was a legal fight that did ensue. Are you in favor, as a board member, of voting to end charter school agreements, even if it means a school closure?
So, first off, I am against any type of school closure. School closures really destabilize our communities. We know that from the history of our city, just, you know, 10 years ago, closing 50-plus schools. And so, I'm completely against school closures. In terms of our charter schools, I am a supporter of charter schools. I'm a supporter of school choice. So, that means charter, selective, magnet. I want our families to be able to have those opportunities, to be able to choose where they want to send their children, to choose their best educational option for them. And so, accountability is important at every single level and as the board, we need to be able to hold all of our schools accountable. And so, I want to be able to ensure that we're providing adequate resources and support for all of the schools in the district.
Okay. Moving on to equity, and this is something that I'm sure may hit home for District 3. So, there are schools in the district that have seen a big influx of migrant students, but also just an uptick in English language learners, students who are identified as learning English as an additional language. But those schools do not have staff that speak the language that the students speak or they don't have staff that are certified to teach bilingual programs. What, as a board member, would you see as a good short-term solution to these staffing shortages? And what would be a long-term solution to help ensure English learners have what they need to thrive in school?
Yeah, as a former teacher, I have, you know, I've worked, I started my career at Lowell Elementary in my neighborhood. We had a lot of English language learners then, when I started my career back in 2012 at Lowell, and I'm very proud to be able to speak the language and talk to our families and students in their native language and work with them on building those skills. And then, when I was working at UIC College Prep, the same thing of being able to provide services and be able to talk to families in their native language is really important to me. One of the things that we can do as a district, and CPS is working on this, when we're, you know, trying to increase programming to have more high schoolers who are interested in becoming teachers, you know, work toward that. There is great programs that exist outside of CPS, like Golden Apple, that are really encouraging more people, especially, you know, Chicago high schoolers, to become teachers. I think that the long-term, we can look at increasing programs like that. How do we, you know, as a school system, we need to be sure that we're providing education and information on all types of careers. Teaching is a career option that I would want our families to think about. I've heard, even while listening to podcasts, I've heard commercials about becoming a teacher in Illinois, which I think is a great opportunity, in Spanish, those ads. That's been really great to help other families learn about this as an option. And so, there's definitely short-term solutions and long-term solutions. In the short run, obviously, we have this need now. We have lots of students that are, that need those supports. How are we increasing programming? Obviously, you want to ensure that you have people who are certified, but what is the additional help that we can ensure that we can get into those classrooms? Whether that's, you know, in training parents, you know, the parent mentor programs that exist? How are we providing additional opportunities for people to become certified, to be able to support in classrooms?
Another area where there have been a lot of staffing shortages in Chicago Public Schools has been in special education. What policies would you support to recruit more teachers to serve students who have disabilities or special education certifications?
Yeah, I think that we can definitely work toward helping more teachers who are currently in the classroom receive that certification and endorsement, right? What are the programs and incentives we're offering them to be able to receive? Same thing with bilingual educators. What are the incentives we're providing to them to be able to do that? If you're a teacher, as I was, if you're a teacher and then you're, you know, thinking about, oh, I really want to be able to provide this service and do the support, but I have to pay for it out of pocket and I'm, you know, don't want to have to spend thousands of dollars on an additional certification if there isn't really more incentives for it? What are the programs that we're providing teachers to help them get those certifications for free or at very low cost? With partnerships with universities in the area, other types of partnerships where we can ensure that we're helping teachers get those certifications? Because I'm sure there's a lot more educators who would be interested if they have the ability to receive that at a very low cost or free.
Another issue with special education, students with disabilities have had a long struggle with getting transportation to school. This has been worsened by the pandemic and the bus driver shortage that ensued in the years to follow the pandemic. This continues to linger. This year, we've heard of students waiting four or five weeks into the school year for a bus route. These are students with disabilities who need and are legally entitled to services at schools. What, as a board member, would you like to see the board do to solve this problem once and for all and stop starting the school year with, you know, hundreds and almost, you know, in some cases, thousands of kids without bus routes?
So, I know CPS released a plan a few board meetings ago around what they wanted to do to be able to support this issue and I believe they're on track to have all students be able to be bused by the end of the first quarter. That's still not acceptable for kids that need to be in classrooms. And I think that there's lots that we can do as a city to support this issue. We need to increase, obviously, incentives for bus drivers. It's a really hard job and it's a city full of traffic. And so, what are we doing to support bus drivers to get those certifications, to get their CDL license, to be able to get kids to and from school? But also, what are the alternative transportation systems that are out there, whether that's doing paratransit or some other transit modalities that are available to get students to and from school? So, I don't necessarily think it needs to be a yellow school bus. There's lots of other transportation systems that are available. So, let's think about what those issues can be. And then, finally, we need to make sure that we're working with all of our partners in this field. This can't be a solution that's only brought up by the CPS Board or by CPS. What are we doing to bring others in to help us with this? So, what are we, you know, what are the meetings looking like with transportation companies? Are we bringing in families who have these issues to hear their ideas? You know, we have a really strong advocacy group, the CPS Parents for Buses. What are their ideas and how can we work on implementing some of their ideas to figure out how we can get students to school? I think it's incredibly important that we don't let these students miss out on their education because of transportation issues.
Is there more work that the board could be doing with other government agencies or other transit authority? I'm thinking, you know, CTA, RTA, PACE, all of these systems. Is there something more that the board could be doing on that front? I know that's not traditionally how, you know, students with disabilities get to school, but certainly they may have ideas.
Yeah, definitely. I think that there is an opportunity always to be able to be open to dialogue and to hear out ideas. It doesn't necessarily need to be, like I said, the board solving the problem. How are we bringing others in to be able to help us solve that problem? And so, thinking about our paratransit system that's run by PACE, like what does that look like? How are we utilizing them to help us get students to school during this critical time? Obviously, resources are limited, but we need to make sure that we're meeting like legal requirements to be able to get these students to school. And that's what worries me the most, is that we're not getting these students into seats, into the classroom.
Well, and we know that the state has monitored this in the past and there's another complaint opened. We'll keep watching that. So, let's move on to facilities and infrastructure. So, one of the key roles of the board is to also pass a capital plan. The first question I want to ask is about, you know, how the district manages its current enrollment with all of the buildings that it does operate. As you know, the district's seen modest enrollment increases in the last two years, but overall, the number of students remains dramatically lower than it was a decade ago. And I'm sure when you were in school as well. Some schools serve a fraction of the students they once did. How should the board and the Chicago Public Schools balance its current enrollment realities with the hundreds of buildings it has in its footprint?
Yeah, as I said, clearly...
You mentioned earlier, you're not a fan of closing.
Yeah, we're not here to close schools. And one of the things that I believe schools can do now is work on bringing in community partnerships. That's, I, one of the things that I've been saying all along when I talk to families is that we, Chicago doesn't have enough community centers. We don't have enough safe spaces. And the work that I do, you know, with nonprofit agencies and my work with COPA, I talk to a lot of these community organizations and one of the biggest issues that they face when they want to throw events and have safe spaces is a lack of space. And then, there are legal requirements, insurance requirements, things like that that prevent sometimes CPS buildings from being utilized for this purpose. But let's figure out a workaround to bring in more community organizations that can help out, community organizations that are going to be in classrooms, that are not being utilized. I think when we're working in that sense, we can also think about what are some revenue that we can bring in that's going to be able to support the school. Obviously, I went to Northside Prep. It's a very beautiful building. A portion of the Northside budget comes in from rentals. Being able to rent out the theater, being able to rent out the gym, that helps out, right? So, what can we do to ensure that we're helping bring in more revenue to help out with these capital issues? There is a large problem with our capital budget in that we're not providing enough money for the budget. You think about the billions of dollars that are like, today needs to get fixed. That's not there in the budget. So, we need to make sure that we're assessing our buildings and seeing what needs to be fixed today that's going to be, that's a health hazard, to ensure that we're providing safe and adequate space for our families.
On that note, capital planning in the past at CPS has been criticized for not being equitable and lacking a true system of prioritization for which schools will get repairs when, which neighborhoods will get new buildings. It's also quite expensive for CPS to fund school repairs because of the district's junk bond status and borrowing picture. How would you approach capital planning in an equitable manner so that CPS could start actually tackling its, you know, $14 billion of outstanding capital need?
You're right. So, one of the things that I've learned in my, so I'm in a fellowship right now called All Chicago Academy for Local Leadership, that's just focused on school board, preparing myself for, hopefully, to serve on the school board. And one of the things that I've learned in this fellowship is that board service is not about just the needs of the kids in my district, but rather the needs of the entire city of Chicago, the entire school system. And so, what I want to make sure that we're doing as a board of 21 members, which is huge, is that we need to be able to come to a consensus of like, what are the things that we're going to focus on? What are the capital expenses that we're going to work on? And obviously, every single member wants to be able to come back and say, I got a new school in my district, right? Or I got this major repair. We can't think of it in that sense. We have to be able to think about it, what are the needs equitably across the city of Chicago to ensure that we're helping out every single child in CPS, not just the ones in your district? Obviously, I want to be able to say that, you know, I got something for my district, but it's going to be about, how can we work together with all 21 members to decide what are the most pressing needs right now that are safety hazards to be able to fix? That I think that's going to be most important.
And what about the financial piece of that? Given the district's bond ratings and usually school, you know, some good borrowing, often people will say, good borrowing is when you're borrowing money to build new infrastructure, build new buildings. What is your thoughts about, what are your thoughts about how does CPS get the money that it needs to address its capital needs?
I think that's going to be good governance and good budgets, right? What are we doing as a board to ensure that we get out of that junk bond status, to ensure that we can in the future use that borrowing power to build more in the city? So, I think that that's one of the key tenets of, like, I don't want to put us in debt forever. I want us to be able to ensure that we have a balanced budget to then that we could borrow later in the future to be able to help with these capital expenses, which you said is billions and billions of dollars.
I think it's $14 billion at the last assessment, $3 billion in critical need. And there's a whole education facilities master plan that CPS put out last year. Folks want to go look for that on our site or on CPS's site. We're getting close to the end here and I wanted to start, I've got two wrap-up questions. One is, I know he's not here today, your opponent is not here today, but if you, you know, if you weren't running for school board, and there's only two of you, but would you vote for him? Why or why not?
I would want to see who else would be running. Right now, my main concern, and I've actually, I've known Jason for many, many years. We both did Teach for America here in Chicago and so I met him actually when I did the Core. And so, I've known him for a really long time. I'm most concerned right now about his tie to the Chicago Teachers Union. You can't have the CTU on both sides of the negotiating table, especially right now that we're going through contract negotiations. I want to make sure that we have someone in the seat that is going to take, talk about the needs of every single family in the district. I'm really concerned about school choice, selective enrollment in magnet schools in my district. If you look at 3B and if you look at District 3 as a whole, our top feeder schools are Pritzker College Prep and Noble School and Lane Tech. Those are two out of the five top feeder schools in the district. And so, I want to make sure that we...
When you say theater school, what do you mean? Can you just explain?
Children in the district.
Go to those?
Go to those schools, most often. And so, that's, University of Chicago released that recently when they're dividing data by district. And so, I want to make sure that we're providing families that choice and that we're not limiting the ability for families to choose those options.
Got it. And then, this one is, again, sort of reflecting on your own time in school. Is there a teacher or staff member from your time in school that you still remember today and shaped your life? Who are they and why?
This is too many to name. I truly believe that I am the person I am today, that I have the career that I have today because of teachers who were there to support me every step of the way. And I want that for every child in the city of Chicago. I want that for every child in my district especially. And the neighborhood feel at Lowell, the love that I received from my teachers there, I mean, if we're like Ms. Gray in 6th grade, Ms. Wendorf in 7th grade, Ms. Knapsik, my math teacher, there are so many folks who just provided me with love and warmth and made me feel safe. That is really what I want for our children. And so, there's so many of them and I don't want to forget anyone because I still keep in contact with a lot of these, with a lot of my teachers. And I think that's really beautiful that, you know, 25 years later, I'm still in contact with a lot of my teachers. And actually, my former elementary school principal just retired last year. She was one of the first donors to my campaign and someone who really took care of me when I needed support. You know, I grew up in poverty. My mom immigrated from Mexico and we didn't have a lot. And at the point in her working career when the factory shut down, she desperately needed a job with health insurance and she got that job at Lowell. My mom became my lunch lady.
Oh, interesting.
And it's not a highly paid job and I love our support staff and I think that they need to get paid more. My mom was making $8,000 a year, but what kept us, what kept her there was the really amazing health insurance that CPS provides. And so, I want to make sure, and obviously, she became an integral part of that school community, as every single person who works in a school does.
Yeah, wow, well, yes, we do. Well, yes, we do, shout out to school support staff. They are the unsung heroes of the school system. Carlos, thank you so much for joining us this morning. This has been really, really nice.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're very happy to welcome one of our candidates in District 3, Jason Doniz. Jason is a chief of people operations at Beyond 100K, a nonprofit dedicated to ending the STEM teacher shortage in America. He leads efforts to improve systems and increase diversity, equity, and belonging. He's also a CPS parent at Moose Elementary and vice chair of the Moose LSC. He's a member of the district's instructional equity working group and worked in central office as an adult learning specialist. He's also a former CPS teacher and a CPS graduate of Greeley Elementary, Newberry Academy, and Lane Tech High School. Jason, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you for having me. That was so smooth. Thank you, it was beautiful.
Such a deep resume you have.
I appreciate it.
We've kicked off all of these conversations with a little bit of an icebreaker for everyone. And it starts with asking you what your favorite and least favorite subject was in school growing up.
Well, that's a good one. It definitely depends on when you asked me. You know, I, early elementary, I had a love and passion for science. I liked to create, to tinker, I liked to take things apart. My mother wasn't really a fan of that part of it, but I had a passion for learning how things work and how the world worked. Sadly, I don't, I don't think that was really affirmed in me as a student. And I kind of like lost my passion for that and found a passion though for history. The study of like people and places and problems especially became my passion to a point where that's what I studied and, and a lot of how I, I lead based in kind of context. So, those are my favorite. I fell in love with history, definitely moving into high school and never looked back. Least favorite, I would say, probably math just, you know, almost by default, the one left out. Like, it, not every math, right? But I think once I got to kind of the trigonometries and calculuses, everything from kind of like the rigor to the rack of, lack of relevance that I could see, at least, ma- made it like not the, not, not the thing for me. Math was more fun in college as astronomy or meteorology.
Yeah, rooted in another subject, kind of, and adjacent to another subject.
Exactly.
You had a lot of least favorite math answers, so you're not alone. We're going to dive right in on a couple of newsy questions. Obviously, there's been a lot of news with the Chicago Board of Education, the resignation of, of former members, the appointment of new members. We're going to start with a couple of yes or no's, and then you'll have a chance to explain. But yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CPS CEO?
I think no.
Yes or no, do you support taking out a high interest loan to cover district operating costs?
I have neither a yes or no. I'll explain.
Yeah, go ahead and explain your answers there.
For Pedro and for the-
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, I was, I've been really excited to quiet the noise and make sense of what it is Mr. Martinez has been doing well, that people have appreciated, and what it is that has not been going so well. And find the opportunity to, to partner. I don't know him. I don't, I have no judgments really about him or the way that he leads, but something is not working. Everything about what we're seeing is not necessarily working. And if we need to shuffle leadership and make sense of like what that right team is to align like on a vision, then that's kind of just where we are. I see it more matter of fact. Like, the point we've gotten to tells me it's too messy to get back from it. I like to believe in people, but I am concerned, as are many of the parents I talk to on doors. And so, to, I, I just, I see a reset better than climbing out of the mess. That being said, we have to really understand how we got here and how it could be, what role everyone played. There's no heroes or villains here. I'm not, I'm not standing here villainizing anyone. It's a potential to be, the story could be a failure of leadership all around, and I hope to understand it. But again, my commitment stays the same. I'm talking to neighbors, I'm talking to parents, I'm talking to ultimately the people. My role is the same. I'm running because of the mess, to quiet the noise and say, finally, for the first time ever, that people get to decide.
And how about the, you were a little-
Yeah, with the, with the, the, with the loan, I think my push or my, my prerogative, my role as a school board member is to push us to fully fund our schools. But I, I'm being asked about one really specific strategy, and I don't know. I want to understand better, high interest? How high interest? What are we, what are the implications? What are we buying? And what are we giving away? And really going through an analysis and not being forced to kind of choose now when you know so little and you spend so many of your hours either in your day job or on doors with parents and community members, like, how is this one strategy sound for funding our schools? I'm not too sure, to be completely honest. I want to understand what the pros and cons would be. And I think this question has become more of a like indicator of how, like, where you'll lean on the radical responsibility of funding our schools or fiscal responsibility. And I just, I deny that choice. I don't believe you have to be one, you have to promote one or the other. I believe it's responsible decision-making. The responsible decision-making comes through analysis, not just like what the headlines are telling me about this loan.
Okay, one of the things that the school board will have a responsibility to do, whether it's, you know, sooner or, you know, a couple of years down the line when Pedro Martinez's contract ends, is selecting a CEO, hiring one, evaluating one, and potentially firing someone. I am wondering what qualities or experiences you think a CPS CEO should have?
You could, oh, and what qualities should the CEO have?
Yes.
Yeah. I believe, and again, this is not, I don't know precisely how Martinez leads. And so, this is not me talking about him. It's talking, this is me talking about my ideal him and/or next him, right?
Exactly.
That's the nature of the question. So, to me, it's, it starts with a sense of radical responsibility to the, the role. Being really clear on what your priorities are and working extra hard to make sure that others understand your priorities and that you're clear and consistent in what you're fighting for and how that informs what you do. That transparency and that clarity at the top is absolutely necessary. And it's what I would demand as a board member. Similarly, they have to be a collaborative leader. They can't shut the door. They can't like come in, you know, suspicious of those they need to work with. We need like an open, ready collaborator. And to be fair to this next person, like, that's exactly what I would say to my future, hopefully, knock on wood, teammates on the board. It's our responsibility to help establish those conditions. So, yeah, transparency, clarity, and a lean towards collaboration. All of that falls under the umbrella of what I imagine, how I would describe an equity-driven leader. The word we throw around a little too much, it's become a little too jargony, but it's still the right word. If you're really trying to define a Chicago's education system that works for all, you need to have a vision for equity, and it can't be just a word you say. It has to be how you think through strategy, operations, funding, and more. Those, that, that's the person I'm looking for. And it's also the person, the standard I hold myself to.
Thank you for that. I think that, you know, the who leads the school system question is a big one for this board. Another thing that the board have a lot of responsibility to do is pass a budget every year. That's one of your core responsibilities as a school board. And, you know, in its most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools projected about a $500 million deficit. They also projected out for the next five years roughly $500 million deficits before even any costs related to a teacher's contract or a principal's contract gets negotiated. How would you approach balancing and that budget and closing that structural gap?
Well, I, we get asked this question a ton. First, I challenge the, the conditions that we're accepting, that we have to accept the deficit. I believe, I know, everyone knows, we are not in compliance with our state's own funding formula. And I believe it's part of this school board's responsibility to use their platform, to use their responsibility to the constituents and citizens of Chicago to go out and try to secure that funding, starting with the state. And I know people, I think, most people who hear that and kind of start to tune out, I think already don't believe that that's possible. I have to believe that's possible because we are now going to be elected members. We are not appointed members. We're not people who are part of a regime, particular regime, given to a, given a job. No disrespect to those who have done that amazing and hard job. This is just different. You are representing, you are chosen by thousands of constituents. These are parents, community leaders, some students themselves that the governor and the state would be denying. We, my vision is that we are going en masse, physically or spiritually, to secure that funding that we are owed. So, that's my first, my first response is, I'm not, I'm not going to walk in and just accept that we have all we have. But if, if then we, you know, accept the premise or we see continued resistance, then my first responsibility is to understand our spending a bit more. I do know, having done some, some research, the vast majority of our spending like is going to our schools. That's good. We do have new, more equitable resource allocation models, like the, like how we experienced this last year as an educator, as a, as an LSC member, how we assign the number of teaching positions rather than kind of give you a big bucket of funds and say like, "Good luck, stretch as many dollars as you can, principal." Like, we are getting more conscious about how to fund. We need to just keep going. We need to keep going in how we distribute resources across the district. And we also need to look for inefficiencies. I manage a, an org-wide budget now. And even in a relatively small budget, you can see redundancies, inefficiencies, vendor contracts that got really bloated over time. These are the places where you have to analyze, but not in the spirit of nickel and diamond. I'm not trying to get the z, get to zero, get to balance at the cost of our students. That's ultimately why I don't want to just accept that we have all we have because we know funding directly correlates to achievement. And so, it's going to be my fight to secure that funding and then make sure that we are using that funding as responsibly, analytically, critically, as we can across the district.
You answered one of my next yes or no questions. But yes or no, do you believe that the state of Illinois should provide CPS with more funding?
Yes. I, I don't really understand running for this if you didn't believe that, if you weren't ready to fight for that. Absolutely, yes.
On that, and then I ask follow-up of just how, how would you, you talked a little bit about, you know, going down to Springfield, but how would you work with other elected officials, whether, whether that's in the area of District 3 or, you know, really across the state, to secure that additional funding? You don't just have to convince somebody in your neighborhood that's a lawmaker, but lawmakers downstate, lawmakers throughout Illinois.
Yeah, well, I believe it starts with convincing my neighbors. My neighbor convinces my other neighbor, their neighbor convinces their family member across the city. And we actually have, again, more of a grassroots, community-driven advocacy group that increases my, my influence a hundredfold. And that includes our elected officials. And I want to be rigorous. Like, I'm politically green, and I accept that. I want to be able to, education is all I've known. I want to be able to understand the ways it quote-unquote "works", but I know my values. And I know if you aren't fighting for funding that we're owed, I, I have to ask why. Help me understand. If you are fighting, if you believe, but you aren't going out or making moves to get it in collaboration with your peers when speaking about electives, I have to ask why. Help me understand. And so, hopefully, what you're hearing is like, being a part of that collective of elected leaders, I take really responsibly, I approach really humbly. Like I said, help me understand, but then we, we got to get moving. Like, if you're, if I accept the, the premise that it takes a coalition to get what we're owed, then my responsibility is to help make that coalition as strong as possible. That includes community leaders, parents, electives.
Another quick yes or no question has to do a little bit with the city's role. And this hopefully will make sense and is something you're familiar with. But yes or no, do you think that the city should go back to picking up the full cost of non-teaching pensions? Or do you believe that that should be split between CPS and, I guess it's an either-or, CPS and the city, the way that it has been split since 2020? And this year, that's that $175 million pension payment that has been kind of a hot potato between CPS and City Hall this, this fall?
Yeah, I don't want to, I can't choose simply because I truly don't understand, again, enough the implications of one or the other. I do know that we, we double pay for pensions. Well, the state doesn't pick up, I go back there. The state doesn't pick up its own in the way that it does for the rest of our great state, the support of our pension payments. And so, I go there. That's also a bigger number, like 600 million or something wild like that. I go there. I want to understand at the city level better how it is done. I have been asked about this. But like I said, I want to truly analyze the pros and cons. What are we, what are we buying? Whichever better funds our schools and gives us access to the resources that our neighborhood schools especially desperately need is the answer.
On school choice, we're going to ask a couple of school choice questions. Do you believe, yes or no, do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools admissions policies should change? If yes, what would you like to see changed? And if no, can you explain why you think the current policies work?
Admissions policies?
Admissions policies. So, these would be magnet, selective enrollment, the Go CPS system.
Yeah, universal pre-K. They're, from, from accounts from parents and students, they are not working. Universal pre-K is a good example of something where we have amazing resources that go underutilized, partially because we're using two different platforms, especially at the rollout. It was messy. Like, that should not happen. We don't have enough resources for inefficiencies to lead to us not getting resources to those who need them most. I mean, literally, every, like, I think every parent I've ever talked to has said, "Expand pre-K, expand pre-K, help me out. The costs are wild until my child reaches five years old." And then we look and see unused spots. That blows my mind, and it almost always comes down to a lack of access at the application level, at the selection level. I carry that to, you know, magnet and selective enrollment. It's, it's unclean. You know, it's, it's unclean and it's stressful. Parents stress about it. Students, I talked to a student recently who was preparing for the selective enrollment test two years in advance. Parents stress about it. Students, I talked to a student recently who was preparing for the selective enrollment test two years in advance. Parents know that their child's on a pathway because of the system that we've chosen to reinforce. Where you are stressing every second you can about getting access to very few spots across the city. At some of our best resourced, um, highest achieving schools. I don't accept that that's the best that we can come up with. I reject, in fact, that that is the best that we can come up with. And that's coming from someone who went from a neighborhood school to a magnet school to a selective enrollment school. Now, that doesn't mean I'm closing the door behind me. Am I saying like blow that system up shouldn't exist? And good luck with whatever pieces are together. No, but I'm saying let's be. More thoughtful about the barriers we see as part of these selection processes, how schools are doing the choosing. Our conditions and lucky chances are doing the choosing and instead redefine the condi- the conditions for everyone to have access to a quality school. Again, that's why I go back to reinforcing neighborhood schools.
Another choice question, obviously the system, um, has about a hundred plus charter schools. Uh, the Chicago Board of Education is in charge of, um, approving those charter contracts and renewing them. And in the past, the Board of Education has taken steps to end charter contracts when schools are not performing well or have financial troubles. Um, this most recently happened with urban prep, you may recall. Um, are you in favor? As a board member, would you be in favor of ending charter school agreements due to, uh, performance or financial troubles, even if it means a school closure?
Well, that's a good one. Ooh, that's a good one back here. It's complicated. That's, uh, no, uh, it's. School, school closure is not an option. Um. In fact, we're seeing those entities charter schools right now. Isn't there like a Cero situation, a Shiret situation? Choosing themselves to, uh, prioritize efficiencies. Um, and close their own schools or defund their own schools, private institutions making that decision. School closure is not an option for a neighborhood school, a charter school, a magnet school. Whatever it is, whatever model, if you're serving students, you deserve to stay open. Um. Now, the question of if you're underperform, you brought up urban prep. From my understanding, it also. Had to do with a lot of scandal and a lot of harm done to students and, uh, families. That's it. Those are, those are different things and I think we have to approach them differently. I still don't have a kind of zero tolerance, but if you've been given this opportunity. To have less public accountability, less oversight, less, um. Opportunity for parents to weigh in on the decision making at the school in the form of charters. Privately run, public funded institutions, you have a responsibility. Um, the promise was that you were going to be the best of us, the best for less. And if you're not making good on that promise, we do need to think really dramatically or really critically about your, um. Your, uh, what, like, what was it? Like the charter, the charter agreement.
Yeah.
Um, but does that mean I'm able to say like, close the school? Like that's an easy decision? Absolutely not, absolutely not. I would first look at, um, where those in, in, where those problems stem from. Uh, which again, to me, come back to the hallmarks of privatization. Who's in charge and who has to say? Not the achievement of the students themselves or the ability of the students themselves.
Right. Um, thank you for that. I know it's a nuanced question and, um, you gave a good nuanced answer. I, um. We're gonna, I have a couple of equity questions related to students, um, who have special. Um, needs and we'll start first with, um, staffing shortages. So one of the. Areas where there have been the most acute staffing shortage, shortages is in special education. What policies do you support to recruit more teachers, um, into those hard to staff fields such as special education?
Um, honestly Becky, I start with the, well, a lot of things come to mind. Okay, hold on. Buckle up. Um, because, yeah, I work in teacher retention, right? And have worked for quite some time in teacher, um. Development primarily of special education teachers. Um. So a few things come to mind. The first is the state and conditions of those roles as it, as it exists. Um, we can't prioritize just recruitment without looking at what's hurting retention. And so I would look at the conditions of our, um, special education programs and we know that. You know them, everyone who's gonna be watching this knows it. Our sped, um. Teams are some of the hardest working, most committed collection of teachers, case managers, um, SICAs and. If one person is sick for one day, students literally do not get the services that they are, um, owed by the state. That's how stretched thin that these teams are. That's how much lack of support that they feel. I'm supported by. Our sped teachers across the city, our SICAs and their union for the. Very fact that I have committed to listening to them, to designing retention strategies from. What it is that they are experiencing with our SICAs. We're seeing them be used. One of the things that they, they, um. SCIU seventy-three has brought me into and what their people are experiencing is, uh, SICAs being pulled to do odd jobs. Um, handle this bulletin board for me, cover this lunchroom for me. We're creating the conditions for our people not e- to, to, uh, be pulled away. From their primary responsibility and that makes every other time they then have to focus on their primary responsibility harder. So I don't wanna be too long-winded here, but I do wanna like drive home that. Um, the conditions are not set for these teams to be strong, supported and reinforced. We're sharing nurses and case managers across schools. Parents, parents do not want that. Our more affluent suburban peers would not accept that. Why should we? Those are the conditions that lead to burnout from these amazing committed people, many of whom come from the community when talking about SICAs themselves. And so I would, uh, look at the conditions of the role and with an eye towards, it lends towards retention. And say, how do we reinforce? And it starts with fully funding and fully staffing these programs. Now, I'll close quickly with just like, and, um, uh, what policies by recruitment? I think there are. Um, I think showcasing what we've done with retention is a big, uh, is it like advertises itself. Um, I think incentives for hard, hard to staff positions. I think, um, mentorship programs, so SICAs of ten years should be mentoring SICAs who are coming in. Special education teachers of twenty years should be mentoring and should have incentives to do so. Um, but supporting those who are entering the pipeline behind you so that, um, they have someone on deck. To support them and reinforce them. It isn't just, um, that isn't just their administrative team. Um, those, those things and more, I promise you, there's just research and research and research I'd love to talk about, but those things and more. Uh, we, we, our, our special education teams desperately need. I know that from the perspective of being a godfather to a non-verbal black boy in CPS, um, the situation is dire. The need is now.
Yeah. Um, I wanna be conscious of time, so, um, I'm gonna move, uh, to the last question, which I asked your opponent yesterday as well. Um, and it's a little different since there's only two of you. Um, I won't ask you, you know, who would you vote for, but, uh, if you weren't in this race. Um, I guess I'm curious, would you, would you cast a vote for your opponent or if he wins, like what advice or ask would you have of him? Um, for the district, like what would you wanna say to him?
That's such a, I've thought about this a lot, Becky, to be totally honest with you, because I know my opponent and, um. I would not cast a vote for my opponent and I think it comes down to the, um. The, uh, privatizers, the out of state millionaires and billionaires. And the team that I see rallying around this cause of quote unquote, school choice. Quote unquote, like efficiency. Uh, when I see that team, that's not the team I see. Has the interest of our families and, and students in mind. Um. I think, uh, my opponent identifies as a, a, a progressive and I believe so and I believe in that, but. I do not see a progressive education policy all around, uh, when you are, excuse me. When you are in favor of something closer to the status quo, where schools do the choosing. Um, and we're okay with the non-choice that we have left parents. We call the choice, it's a non-choice. I talked to. I've talked to thousands of people on doors. When I hear a parent describe why they chose a private school. Ten out of ten times, they say, I would have loved to have stayed in my neighborhood. I would love to save those $20,000. Um, charter school parents similarly, magnet parents similarly, they want what's best for their student. Should, we've decided we can reinforce a si- an uneven system. Um, I'm not hearing the commitment from my opponent to our neighborhood schools. I'm not seeing the interaction. Um, with my opponent and parent advocacy groups and, and forums I've been a part of, put on by those groups. I'm not seeing a commitment to working class families and the ability for working class people to. Uh, have a say and, and hold our leaders accountable in the conditions that they set for, um, for our working class families. So no, I think. I am, uh, spiritually in, in favor of, uh, Latino male from. The block, like having an opportunity to run and lead, but I am not seeing. The policies that are best for our students. Um, so no, I would not vote for my opponent. Again, you said it, it's, it's, uh, it's an easy, there's a one, there's one, there's one other choice. So I'm biased, obviously. Um, but advice, should, should, um, should my opponent win? Um, I, I say reflecting and look at the, the. Look at what you're, you're promising and, and, and how those promises are, uh, going to lead to a truly transformative. Education experience for all citizens. Look and, and look at this, the, you're, you know, your models of. Uh, your mottos of what, what you believe every child deserves and trace it back. Look at who's supporting you and say, are these the same people that helped reinforce, uh, uh, uh. A reality of school closure that led us to school closures a decade ago as opposed to liberation for our families. I would say. Check, look and go back to your beliefs, go back to the promises you made to yourself and your community. Um, and then I'm, I'm, I'm willing to partner, like, I, I'm, I'm willing to say. You did it. You did that thing. You earned the job. I'll hold you accountable to doing that job, but I will always be a partner in doing that job. Um. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Jason, for joining us today. We appreciate you taking the time to do this.
Yes, thank you so much. These are great nuanced questions. Um, I know y'all put a lot of thought and energy into them. Uh, continue doing that hard work of informing the people. That's an amazing and hard responsibility, but I appreciate you for it.
Yes, and thank you all for tuning into Chalkbeat's inaugural school board candidate forums. To learn more about the people running in these historic first school board elections, you can find our voter guides and additional resources at chalkbeat.org slash Chicago. Thank you again to our partners at Block Club Chicago, WBEZ and the Chicago Sun-Times for working with us to develop our, our voter guides. For Chalkbeat Chicago, I'm Becky Vivi. Thank you. Have a great day and happy voting.